Right away, clearly a lot that wasn't, isn't part of the second law. It was recorded as an access right away. That's how it shows up on the county, county rolls as an access that would never be built upon.
So is the well recorded there?
The well is recorded there.
And on the, on the Division of Water Rights is well?
It is.
So how do you, how do you really justify making that law with that kind of problem in the entrance?
Well, it's not a law. They've incorporated it in the back law.
So the, the lot is the nine acres in the back, not the parcel that we've, I'm looking at on the map?
Yeah, it has a, it has a, well, I guess you could buy that off of it, but it hasn't, that limitation that went down to be built on. As opposed to if you own that, you can buy that off of it. The limitation that was recorded on it, one of the soul.
But this is two parcels, but it's really only one lot. You have a lot of those. The county like to go put lines down the middle of parcels for a while. So we've got two lots, but it's really only one lot for two parcels, but one lot.
Perfect example. Can they call the secretary to get that answer? Probably not.
So that lot could use that well?
I don't think they have the rights to that well, probably not.
They'd have to figure that out. I mean, the water rights would have to be figured out amongst the owners of the well. It wouldn't have anything to do with the town.
However, a more complicated is there's three owners to that.
Oh, nice.
So they'd all have to get together and work it out, but most importantly, the town is not a party to that and we don't need to be involved in it. So if they can work it out, that's great. If they can't, that's fine.
You have two owners on one side and one owner on the other side. So it's very interesting.
So if they want culinary, our, the municipal water system, we have a meter that's, or we can set the meter in the existing center and they can run a lateral back and if they can work a road in without, with their well and all their other easements and issues.
That will be, that will be a new hookup when that's purchased.
Does a residential hookup provide a annual irrigation water share?
We've talked about that back and forth and we do definitely think that that's what we need to be doing is getting a one share per hookup. So that point of diversion from.
From the residence applying.
Right.
The county, so does that mean they have to provide one share of annual water to get a hookup?
Right, the 10,000 plus one share of water.
Okay.
Is the council aware that there has not been one residential hookup that has provided a water share yet?
Since we became a town.
I am aware and I didn't know we, we could or should, I just knew the impact fee was double that, but I didn't know a homeowner resident until tonight that they were, that we needed or that we're supposed to. I, like you said, we maybe needed it, but I don't think it's on the books, is it?
Well, it was, it was when we took over the company and they had them, but they actually returned those in the transition of this coming into the town. They returned those shares to those folks, which was the whole time they required the share, but they allowed them to keep using the water. So the share was turned over to Daniel Municipal Water, not municipal, what was it? Daniel Domestic Water. It was turned over to them, but they just kept them and then when this transition happened, they gave them back. So the problem becomes is we get what people want and we don't have the water, potentially could run out of water. With that share, you can, you can take that and change the point of diversion to our well and put that in our system.
Would we, would we, do we have another agenda next month?
Sure.
Okay.
We can put on the agenda next month and we can take care of it. And when we address the new impact fee, the new impact fee is that plus an equivalent water rate of the point oh one five or whatever your number. The equivalent one or two shares depending on indoor or outdoor. So I think we already did it, but let's put on the agenda.
And the one place where that might be critical, the irrigation share of water would be in the Stormhaven Crazy Acre Tammy Lane. Because that, that well, I don't know how it's able to keep up with, with what kind of usage I seen last summer. So that could be one of the places where we could use the, the annual irrigation water share.
Question.
Well, how many shares came with that water was to go over the well?
Fifteen, fifteen shares.
Question, when?
We had one, about four nights, been sixty, isn't it?
When somebody's well goes dry and they want to hook up to the Daniel Culinary and you know, they got a water right for that well, but it's not producing now or producing very little and that's why they're going. Would it be advantageous for the town to take that water right?
Could they transfer that one over to the new point of diversion?
What, what the impact fee says, it will verify how much, what exactly got passed, was it was money plus the water rate. And so we talked about one annual irrigation share, but we said it more generically. So if they have a water rate for a well, maybe that was derived from two annual shares, maybe it was derived from something completely different. But they can use that or they can turn over something different. It's, it's an equivalent volume of shares of water from irrigation companies or anything else. So when a well went dry and they wanted it with the municipal system, they could use that water rate or they could retain that and get a different water rate. We don't really care. Just that it comes with money and the water rates. So we have the money to repay the system we built and then the water to continue to supply water to the residents. But it's, it's phrased a lot more generically than one share. Fundamentally, that's basically what we mean.
Yeah, because different shares are worth different volume of water.
Right, so they could turn in a ninth share of Lake Creek or some fraction of extension. We, we don't really care. We just need that equivalent volume so that we can turn around and supply that back to them.
When, when that point of diversion, the state determines the vol, once, once it, once that gets changed, doesn't the state, or they can tweak that volume of water every time there's a diversion or can, do they? Unless it's a different use.
Every time you go to the state, they can tweak the volume.
Exactly. Yes.
And then, and then commercially, this is handled entirely differently. Right now, with the, we can get four shares of water according to your code?
No.
In a commercial?
No. What the water was for, that we, that we will be talking about right now is, is that is for land which has been historically irrigated. So that's so the water doesn't get transferred off the land. The developer, commercial developer comes in, develops a property, sells it, leaves. He's got the, he's got the shares in his hand, down the road he goes.
And then he sells the shares somewhere else.
There's no water for that commercial problem. So when it becomes commercial, the town requires that to come into the town. Our code says, states for land which has been historically irrigated. So there's no update to parking lots, roofs, buildings. The county code has that in, but our code doesn't. At the time we adopted that in 2006, it wasn't addressed.
So you're going to tell the council tonight that we need to look at that code and probably redo it?
We've told it, we've told them that. We'd like to get through the other one first.
And this one won't be near as tough?
I, I don't know that, but we'll see.
I guess I was hopeful.
So this is, I just passed out an email from Mike, that developer that we've been talking about. He CC'd me in the email to Darlene. We've been back and forth since you and I had talked to those folks. And they have done everything but turn over the shares. So what we have done is I had Mike write them an email, CC us, get him out of the loop. It's now between the town and the Daniel Irrigation Company. Because they've been hiding behind each other as this whole process has gone on, absolutely zero cooperation.
Didn't we agree that that could go in as a Daniel Municipal Water?
Yep. And then they came back and wanted to turn it over back to him.
But they still live in Stormhaven, is that your point?
Well, yeah, because he hasn't, he didn't talk after we, me and Kim ended that with them and said, just put it in the town.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because he brought up the issue, the Stormhaven Water Company has, is out of business. So he looked up to doing business as of the state and it says it's been canceled. So he didn't want to turn over that, just to turn over the town.
There you go.
We'll move it back when we need to.
The towns anyways.
Right. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm just reading.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this almost reads that Mike is looking in to see if the town can do what we did.
Yes.
Is, is that, is that a potential lawsuit or is that?
Absolutely.
Are we, are we on friendly resolution type of terms with this or adverse or?
Oh, it's, we are definitely not neutral.
And, and our stance, the town's stance is then?
Well, what it came down to was Mike's, Mike thought it was a taking or an exemption.
It started at the beginning before you ever built here, so.
It's complicated. I don't know. Well, we can start there. What happened is they were supposed to turn over those shares before he got a building permit. Mike wanted to do his groundwork, get the semen in, he started the process without a building permit. Because usually you have two different permits. You issue the grading and the infrastructure and then, but we're a little town. We don't have two permits. So we let it get started. Well, he just blew right through that and kept on and built the building without a building permit. These shares should have been turned over before the building permit was ever issued. It should have not been an issue at the end of the project. And so, and he was told that, it was upfront, he knew that. The problem became that we went through the whole process working with him and then now at the end, now he's walking and turning over those shares. Because now you're holding up my CO when we should have been holding up the building permit. So, and so I've explained that to him, Ryan's explained that to him. I finally, this is, you know, we, we voted on the four shares here and I negotiated on his behalf for that. And then he didn't like that, I guess. He said he did. But then he, then he said he didn't like that, that he was looking at legal counts. I said, that's fine. We're now back to eight shares and let's go through the process. So that's, that's what this pushed through, turn over the four shares. He doesn't want to go through it. But obviously you can see that he CC'd Dan Matthews in this email and he's looking into what he calls an exemption on it. So that's where we're at with this. We are now between the town and the irrigation company. This pretty much resolves Mike. Because we was looking at if, if that wasn't the case, we're looking at pulling COs and pulling business licenses. Everything that was negotiated in there was because of this water share. And so we was looking at some, some, maybe some penalties on that end to get, to get back to where we needed to be. That's why we did the vote, was to help him get done.
Well, and this is the third time. So he said he would, then he told them different directions. Then he said he would again to us after Eric talked to him, then he told the D I C different directions. This is the third time that he finally put this in with all the other added to it.
But I still don't quite understand this. So we don't deal with him anymore. We deal with the water.
Irrigation on these four shares. He has done, he's fulfilled his requirements.
Oh, he has. He's done his four shares.
He's done his four shares.
Okay.
Because that's what he says, maybe I need to get turned in. So Chris, we're still, we've already got ours. So I usually don't get a lot of nasty phone calls. This was a nasty phone call.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have to know. So there's a result always complied.
With Daniel Irrigation or?
No, with Mike.
With Mike.
Because they just hide behind each other and I can't.
Yeah.
I'm like, you know what? I don't care if you lie to me, but just tell me you aren't. Then I can move on, you know? I'm all right with, if you need to lie to me, okay, just tell me you aren't. Then I can move on and get things done. So that's where we're at with that. I think we've, Mike's out of it. He may bring, look into something to see if that was an exemption. That's totally up to him. That's his right to do that. But I think now we're to the irrigation company. I sent, I talked to Doug today and also I sent Hugh a text, which I got no response. Doug's in Hawaii though. I did talk to him. So they're reluctant to turn them over to the town at this point.
They are?
Yes.
They talked about that in the Daniel Water meeting, that they didn't apply.
There was something to the effect that that was way too many shares to turn.
Yeah, and they, they tried to get into all that. I mean, as soon as you explain to them that that's the code, they don't even interpret the code. The council interprets the code. That's what, that's what we do. And I think Devin was pretty clear now. We need to tell them that. If that's what the code is, that's what it is. So that's a whole different issue. So I think we're on track with that. It's been a long process. I'm glad we're this far. We should be able to narrow that down to, to have something. So I'm hoping we're not headed to litigation, but we might be. We'll have to come back and decide if that's how we want to go with that.
I, I just wanted to do one clarification. I think it was Casey or maybe it was John that asked, how many shares of Daniel Irrigation did we acquire in the Stormhaven?
From Susie's wells. Yeah. I wanted to know how much was sitting there with that property.
And how many shares did we require?
We got with that fifteen.
Fifteen? The water company doesn't recognize, the irrigation company doesn't recognize that most.
But they do. And I voted sixteen shares, not this last meeting, but the meeting before.
Oh, okay. Pardon me.
But, but, but they said, could, could they put down sixteen and we, you know, we, so.
Yeah.
Do we have a certificate from there that says that?
I think we do.
Yes, we do.
Now, the, the question would be is, I do believe that Heber City does the same thing with their water.
No, exactly wrong. Heber City requires you, if you annex into Heber City, you will turn over all of your shares to Heber City.
I, I know, but I'm talking about the voting rights that they have. If the Heber City can't vote those rights that they have, can't they?
They have up till if they decide to change the rules.
It's complicated. They, they don't allow them to vote the shares. They instead have entered into an agreement and they have a representative from the council on the board. So their vote is on the board already.
So did they do that like a proxy or a member of the board?
Uh, one of the, one of the council members, they, they appoint somebody to go be their representative and he sits on the irrigation board and votes those shares.
But not in a, not in a public meeting? And I was gonna say, who's that been in the last so many meetings? Is the, the Heber City representative for that? Or do they just do it?
Benny was it? Now I'm not sure. I think Jeff Bradshaw, I think is it.
I think so.
But still, the president says, is that they still get a vote. They still have a voice.
Yes, they do have a voice.
And I'm just trying to say that.
Yes.
You know, irrigation company can't take the voice of.
I've had a question in and they, yeah, that would be a taking of the right if, so Heber City can come this way and be on the board and so maybe that's kind of a gray area, but they still have the right. They can't just take that right away from their shares to one person if they don't take it away from everybody. So the question has been asked and it doesn't seem like it should be a big of a problem per se, but once again, two, two attorneys, they.
The answer is that hasn't been challenged.
As a municipality, there was too many municipalities that have built those shares that they have.
Absolutely.
And that's what I mean. So that's the reason we have that leave of standing saying, well, everybody else has got the same vote.
Seems logical to everybody but D I C?
They still be each group.
One slot left.
We don't want to do a thing. That's why we've been, okay, that's enough from planning.
All right, all right, moving on. Planning, um, Kim, Daniel Municipal Water Matters is needed.
Mayor, you were talking about a valve issue.
I was talking about the one that's up by the gravel pit that we sent a letter out if that ever got corresponded with, if we heard yea or nay or just that one.
Yeah, we, we have had a customer up there that we need to go in and remove a hydrant. It's not metered. And so there was a certified letter that went out and it says that that work will be done in April or May. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, but that was signed for?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So basically we just picked the month and, and go do it, get the job done.
What I was going to bring to the council and ask you all tonight is just, you know, find a contractor that's reasonable, have the contractor go up and do it on behalf. It's, the contractor's going to have to do it anyway. And if there's problems, then, you know, the sheriff's about to get called in, but.
And my suggestion is the same contractor that was involved with Rance Drive and also the move of the water meter on 3000 South. He's already bonded and he seems to be reasonable, but if I'm not mistaken, we're required to get three bids, anything over $500. Is that correct?
I can, I can, I can authorize $2,000.
Okay. What was that, the move on 3000 South?
The original bid we got was about $2,000. I don't know what, it ended up being with the Remo Open and everything.
It would be before the council as far as.
That's why I don't know what it is.
Town didn't pay that, so it's wired in.
I think Kim was just asking, numbers are very close. And so the original bit that I was part of getting was around $2,000.
Twenty-five.
Including materials. The, the, the new one after he had the Remo Open stuff, I didn't, I stayed out of that.
Okay, is this a local contract?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that would be my preference if, if I could keep that underneath $2,000.
Well, I just want to make sure that all of us are agreed. I mean, wouldn't you feel it's time tomorrow, next week, next time, I mean, except the letter, we want to go through with the process of.
Mayor, you have to understand that it was negotiated and I do not go on that individual's property.
I do understand.
So you'll have to work, I, I'll be happy to work outside of that, but.
I was just saying, get the contractor to, to line it up. I know that you, you know, I don't know if you, if you don't want to feel comfortable even doing the contractor, we can do it, but I knew that you didn't.
No, I'd be happy to help with that, but I, I think as far as the time that's chosen, both of them do the work, I think that needs to be done through the water management if you want.
Okay. I guess what I'm deciding, we're probably fine with it any, anytime that works for the water department. Okay, so is there something you want to talk to Gary or should I call Gary on it? I talked to Gary a couple of times today, not on this issue, but I just think that, yeah, we got a contractor to get it done.
I believe it's all set in place. Gary did sign that letter. That certified letter, so he's, he's pretty able to speak on that.
Is there a shut off valve just before that, Ben?
You know, there is according to some of the sketches we've seen, but we cannot find.
That's why I was just curious.
How are we going to shut that down to, to pull that hydrant out of the cap? With the shutdown of the whole system?
Yeah, that's what, that will, will bring the system down. But because it's so high in the system, that drains out first. So we might as well wait off for two or three minutes.
Would it be a good time to throw a valve in since we've got to excavate it?
If we did, I'd, I'd rather do it on the other side of the highway.
I think that would be a different project. To pull the hydrant out, plug it and turn the water back on.
But I think there's the location where it is and that, that's going to be one of the first places that you'll be able to work on. So that's good.
Yeah, we probably ought to look where that tees off.
On the other side of the highway. We'll never get it by the recent excavations though.
Great, they never saw it. They never saw it. We were watching close.
We know it's more than three feet deep.
Okay, so back to municipal as far as water and hey, we got some trees trimmed, did not shake, not burn any wires, they're all very smooth up there at the pump house?
We tried to reduce the tree trimming so that we could actually come back down and take some of the trees right out. Because it's going to be a problem every two years. They're going to have to look at the, uh, branch it out of those trees. But I, I don't know if that material applies or not. We're still working at that. And I think if we get the right diplomacy in there, we'll make that happen. The other, the other problem we have there is the data line is laying on the ground. And that has to do with Century Link. We had Century Link up there. But it's a long pole between two posts, power posts. So you've got to get some kind of a cable truck up there that can pull that, but that still needs to be done. That data line is still laying on the ground. And it's really tough to get in there. I mean.
There, there's no road, right? It's just.
Well, there's no road, but at the same time, you've got to respect all the property owners' rights and try to accommodate that. But I'd like to get that data line up on the pole, so we haven't given up on that yet. But we can, we can count on losing power up there. If we don't get some of those trees removed, probably every two years.
And, and why wouldn't the, okay, so up to that, except for this spot, and I've kind of been drawing math and things, why would the, you know, even if I'm supposed to come and do it, whether they have to hike in or drive in or crawl in or fly helicopter in or in that kind of.
Well, their, their rule is, is they should only take out 10 feet of the trees. You, you guys have probably been down the road and seen where a willow tree is cut in half. They get within 10 feet. But if, if they can work with the existing property owners and take those particular trees out, that's what they like to do. And then the problem's gone.
Is that kind of where we're trying to get to?
Well, we can't get it down in there because the property owner is concerned about getting the steel all dug out and tore up. And so we're waiting for the right time to do that. That could be within a couple of weeks or it could be after the first cut or it could be never.
But we know we have to deal with it and we know it's out there.
But we've got the power back on, we're good for two years. The data line laying on the ground has been like that for.
Ten years.
Ten years. We're just trying to do some other ones.
Excellent.
Form a tent and not do it yet.
Exactly. Any other questions from council with regards to Daniel Municipal? Um, Stormhaven?
Oh.
Yep.
I'm going to go out on a limb here.
Again?
Again. With Kelly, and I don't remember his last name.
Kristison.
Kristison, with the county, and he was talking about putting in a new shed and a new meter, a new box.
Two months ago, right?
Yes, yes. I haven't heard from him. I don't know where that process is to, and sometimes that can take some time.
Were they pretty anxious a few months ago though?
Pardon me?
Were they pretty anxious a few months ago?
It sounded like they were.
He wanted the, the approval. That's what he was going for. Because he still, if there was possible little ways out, he wanted to make sure that it was going to be okay with us.
It's a whole addition of that building, so I don't have a paint window on it.
Would the, would the council entertain just one meter and box to service both entities rather than two?
Any advantage it would be?
Well, it's a disadvantage. You don't collect as much money.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to think. The, the, the use of the water in, in the Public Works Building is always under 3,000 gallons. That's pretty minimal use. And they're paying $90 on that, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it might be because Kelly's going to have totally separate billing. I think he wanted the separate, he wanted the separate meter because he's totally separate from the other side.
Different county or different budgets or something?
Yeah. I know if they would need that for accounting purposes.
We have, county departments are under different heads now, but as willing to get along as they should be.
Okay, then I'm going to put all my thoughts on that. Well, that'll just go to me and boxes.
The advantage to that will be, because one meter doesn't work, if they are using that to hose out trucks, they could very well be over. They may not want him on that meter.
Well, I just thought I could save a little money on my garbage.
Got three punches coming up for free, come on.
Same, but there was a lot of money.
He's small, June, now he's probably out of three months.
What did we talk to him about?
Well, they changed it. I'm guessing they have a good reason. I kind of like them spread out.
Okay, so we're moving on to the Stormhaven, but you said, hold on. So is there, that, that was it for the municipal, standing for Stormhaven?
I think we've covered it.
Okay. We, we need to probably discuss hookup things up in that area. We need to, we just keep pushing it off and I think it's.
Let's make it an action item for next.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to move on that. We, we're going to have, I believe, some applications coming our way for reserve.
I know there's a guy coming next month. They called me today and it's called whoever about hooking up a meter. I called Gary, excuse me. That's what Gary and I are talking about today and.
More torn.
You know, and I, I said, you know, you, we can't make a decision. So I told him he'd be on next month's agenda. So if he wants a new meter, I think, or also a hookup there.
I think that there was only two lots in there that actually have the vault and everything already set that aren't being used, correct? The other ones would have to be added. Like the one between, I think it's Fabrizio's that own it. There's a, there's, there's already, I think, a, a vault sitting there, but I don't think there's a meter.
Yes, there is.
And then.
He's refused to pay it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, but I'm just saying, like, if a new person came in to buy that, that was traditionally already slated for. And I think that you should honor that one. But the other ones that have no vaults to that are the ones that I think are in question that are not traditionally already, you know, in the, in the works for the system.
Casey, how would we honor that where he hasn't been paying on?
Well, no, it wouldn't be for him, but it'd be like the new owner that would come in. We wouldn't have to. Well, no, it wouldn't be for him, but it'd be like the new owner that would come in. We wouldn't have to excavate, add another system, another, another hookup to the system. Know what I mean?
Wouldn't it be considered a new hookup?
Well, traditionally, I do believe that lot was sold as a building lot that was supposed to be built on in the past.
So maybe that the new customer would back up and take care of all of the old monthly...
I think that's what we've established in the past, that by the time that they closed, that they would be brought current, regardless if it's the owner or the new owner, that the fees would be paid. I think we talked about that last week, or last month.
Well, last few months I know we did, because we talked about either sending out something to the realtor, saying this has a lean against it, or we threw out some other discussion, I remember.
So I think that we need to put the lean on it then, so that when it does sell, or if it does sell, that it's transferred to the new owner. What I'm trying to say is the moratorium on the lots that are being built, if the lot isn't traditionally has a meter hookup in it, I think that's where we have that leeway of saying, you know, this lot's not traditionally watered right now.
Why wouldn't the hookup fee in that area be the same as it is in other parts of the town?
Because we have to build a new water tank.
Oh, you're going to want a bigger hookup fee.
Because if we're going to build a tank, that system has to sustain.
A good view of, well, Ryan, excuse me. Ryan came in, it's been a year, year and a half ago, and wanted everyone from that area, Storm Haven, Crazy Acres, Tammy Lane. He says, here's our proposals. This is if we do it right, your water mill will be $360 a month. But if we can scale it down and get to just bare minimal, it's going to be $176. I don't know if these are correct numbers, but we, we laid all that out, and I don't, I didn't see anyone wanting anything to do with any of those proposals.
Due to the dollars. But if they're out of water, you can do something. And if that's, requires a new tank, which I'm hearing, that's what it needs, possibly a new well.
Yes, it's going to be both a new well and a new tank.
We've got to get there somehow.
It won't be this year.
And you, you informed me that there's not a moratorium up there. I was understanding that there was a moratorium in there.
I don't believe this council passed a moratorium.
I think we've discussed it, looked for it, talked about it.
But would you please put that on the agenda? I don't think we have.
On the agenda, I don't think we ever passed it.
We never passed it. We, we could not, we could not service anyone else up there unless we can find a way to get 200,000 gallons a month that's being used off.
I was going to say, maybe if we're not watering a mountain site, it's dry.
We might, but I, I think that the town should be in a position to where they've got an option later on for that. And for right now, I, I think it would be a good idea to put a moratorium up there if it's not placed now. I'd like to see that on the agenda.
Let's put that on the agenda for our combined meeting.
So two weeks, the combined planning and council meeting.
Well, this is good. Will we have the data available, Ryan?
The data?
Yeah, from Storm Haven, what our use is, whether... I mean, will we be able to review that prior to this moratorium coming up or vote? So much for cutting these fees down, huh?
Okay.
You want to see that, don't you, John? All the, all the data, what we're producing, what's going on prior to this moratorium?
Yeah, we talked about that, didn't we?
I don't know if I've ever seen the data on that.
But we talked about getting it or something?
Yeah. We can have that out, so we can...
Well, you know how much, well, I remember talking last summer about, I was just really surprised you were at the volume that was, that was kicking out, and so I'm sure at least the water department has volume between...
We've had some issues over the meter that brings the well, that water. So we do have a meter, but there was some issues on...
We can figure something. We'll have some, I can have something to present that shows water use. It may have to involve some estimations and some approximations based on electrical demands and other things, but I'll have something.
So actually we have that now, last time we talked about it, we didn't...
Yeah, before we had nothing. Now we at least have meter readings. I think they're just, they're a little sparse, but they're, they're good meter readings, so we can, we can take what we have, and I can use that to look at our, our usage. We'll be assuming the percentage.
Okay, so that'll be on our agenda when we meet with the council.
On the 17th, I think it is?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Okay, we've got to Daniels, Storm Haven, on to item number eight and nine, so we'll start off with February minutes first. Did anyone get a chance to prove those, and if so, any questions or changes to it?
I have my copy. Well, you're going to make it.
You're going to make it?
Yeah.
I'm not a member.
You're going to be.
I was wondering if we could do that.
Yeah, we can. You watch this. So after the, I do have a couple of items on the February.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, that's in March. February's good. I like it. Motion approved.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the February 6th minutes, and we have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Any last discussion on the minutes? All in favor to pass?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes for February 6th pass. Okay, March 6th, which page?
Okay, I'm on page six.
Okay.
At the bottom paragraph. So I've highlighted a piece for Ryan.
Ryan Taylor explained?
Mm-hmm.
So I think I was explaining partially the conversation that I had with legal counsel and then some other opinions. And so I would, if we change it to Ryan Taylor explained the exchange of shares, cross out becomes, to say could become, a taking, cross out and, since the roof area reduces the irrigated area.
Hold on, Eric. I got could become and what, could become a taking and what?
So, so Ryan Taylor explains the exchange of shares.
Yep.
Then cross out become and change it to could become.
Yep.
A taking.
Yep.
Cross out and, leave the word since, the roof area reduces the irrigated area, period. And then cross everything out down to the end of that sentence. And then, I may have said the courts, but many codes, because I'm not a lawyer, so I, I work with codes, I don't work with a lot of courts. Many codes now look at the acreage still being irrigated to figure the shares to be re-erelungished. Sounds a lot more like an engineering, a lot of the codes are doing a lot less like legal opinion, and since I, I'm not a lawyer, I don't want to sound like one.
Ryan, will you read that one more time?
Yeah, I can, here. I'd be interested to show you.
I didn't want to throw words in his mouth, but I did want to take a few out. Okay, at the top of that line, W C W E B.
Okay.
And then, so if you'll turn the page to page seven, this is where I was talking. First paragraph. So we're down, pass the bold, next one. Storm Haven Water Company, Reverend Daniel Town. So, take out into taking, the shares can be moved to Storm Haven Well Service.
Perfect. Okay, that being said, any last discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve the Monday, March 6th.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any last discussions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Recorder's office, pass the time over to Lynn for warrant approvals. One thing she'll be going over is our quarterly budget updates, and then she and I will be meeting this month. And so I wanted to, if anyone had some ideas on some budgetary items that we've gone over this year on a few, but we'd love any input from anybody that might have it. So we're going to be working on that this month. I'll turn that time over to Lynn, if you can get it over.
Jake, you've got the warrants there in front of you? First four, it looks like, deal with office supply items from reimbursement, the building surcharge. For the education fund is done on the other side. And there are the invoices from G D A engineers. The verbiage on the invoices, when they number these and categorize them, G D A uses planning in a different sense than what Epic did or what our town is used to. And so they submit that invoice as general permitting invoice, but it's to deal with the planning work that Ryan has done throughout the month, his legislative tariff and the issues that are involved. So I put on here general planning invoice.
If I stop you right there for a second. Ryan, with regards to these invoices, would Epic have any ties or into any of these, so it's all through you?
This is, yeah, this is all, all G D A and my timer, things I have done through the town.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Eric's Blue Stakes hours on there. I did not get a return. I requested the quarterly statement from Blue Stakes and did not get one today. Last month was something like $32.50. So if we can just throw a number out there and say, if it's, I put in here, approve up to $60, whatever figure you want. So when the invoice comes?
It's never been $60.
It might be this much.
Eric, you tell me that it's been a lot of time.
The power company is on the name, best with Blue Stakes.
Oh, right, every pole and everything.
Every pole, right down there, three to the top.
So to fill in a number there that you're comfortable with, should we go up to $100?
I would say anything from $100 or below, go ahead for sure.
Okay.
Hasn't the council filled a couple kids that?
Yeah, it is what it is.
Exactly, we have to pay it.
Yeah, I haven't had the line yet, so.
No removal?
Yeah.
Thank heavens, it was only $423.
I wanted to see that fax today.
And we should be through with that. Eric figures that. So next page on the water company.
Two questions. Who got the S D card?
The video.
What about the council members? Would that be, can we split that out? When it says council members 200, I almost read that as each council member is getting 200.
No, if that were the case, it would be a thousand or 100. So it's, it's reduced if someone isn't present, it goes down to $150?
Sure.
Would you rather say $50?
I think it said individuals' names listed.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. And then a $50 amount next to each name?
Yeah.
Sure. Next page, we had a high power bill again, 327.19.
Okay, finish up a difference, Lynn. So did we see any, okay, so I'm, I'm just for my own mind, trying to do these months that are so low and these months that are higher. Was there any, another extra run or two runs, or any explanation? Just curious, just trying to put my finger on it.
I started the well to collect some sampling.
One start, then maybe maybe it changed that.
Well, knowing what we did, I let it run for a while.
Probably needed two.
Like it filled the tank.
I just, I'm just curious, did it went up two or three times, or one time?
Well, once we bumped it, we incurred the cost, so I figured, let's, let's run it and get some water through the well and get our maintenance cycle done. So I wrapped it up and let it run after I, after we started it. Yeah, the tank was at 14 feet, and I let it run to this bolt. But I figured we incurred, we incurred 90% of that cost.
The first, what, two minutes?
Run the well.
What's the total depth of the tank?
Tank is 20 feet. And so we tried to keep it above 15 feet. It's been successful most of the night.
So the rest of it deals with water testing samples. The large amount, 1,352, was a form test that we were supposed to have completed by the end of last year and did not. So we're playing catch-up. I think we've got two outstanding ones, the tests have been turned into the laboratory, and once the analysis is done, and we're built for those. Then we should be on just the chloroform back tea, E. coli, I think, for the rest of the year. Payroll hours there. Storm Haven, gas, electric, the engine on again is for the sampling, and the regular tests.
Well, I'll, as far as the warrants go, I know, let's, let's get a motion on that, and then we'll move on to the quarterly budget updates. So I'll entertain a motion for the warrants.
Make a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept, a second? Also, make a motion and a second to approve the warrants. Any last discussion on any of the items?
Yeah, I'm just going to hit that S D card that John mentioned. John, we, we do upload to YouTube, or we do keep that S D card, as those fill. We are keeping those as a backup.
Oh, I see, so you, we buy them occasionally because they fill up.
Yeah, I'll fill that up, and then we...
Good, that's a great idea, so.
This one, the wine was stable. The sentiment brought it up, such a good reason to hit it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, does that still wait for more?
Well, you got the motion second, I was discussing.
Oh, that was a discussion, okay, so then I'll appear. Aye, any opposed? All right, a little slower than that.
It takes a village.
It does, thank you. You got me out. Okay, we'll keep the time back over to Lynn for quarterly budget updates.
So I've put each fund with our budget as approved for the, for this year, and behind it, what the Polaris fund, or excuse me, budget will look like. And as we enter the payments received or invoices paid, it automatically populates. I'm still on a little bit of a learning curve, but then you can see the percentage at any time of, of where you stand on what's been spent or what's been received. So just looking at the budget as approved here, the figure's written there, property taxes. On, to go back to this second page. The way this, this software system is set up, it has current year's property taxes, prior year's property taxes, and fees in lieu. And when we get the checks from the county for the taxes, it's broken out into those categories. So where we have always traditionally just approved a budget for $40,000 in property taxes, you can see what is current and what is past, fees in lieu. And it's my understanding that if you have a budget of $40,000 and receive additional monies in fact from prior years or fees in lieu, that doesn't have to be part of your budget. It's just extra, which enables us to stay at the $40,000 and still collect more tax revenue. We've always tried to, to not raise the taxes for many reasons, but one of which is the truth in taxation. the truth in taxation hearing that would be required to do such. So you can see that the software program will give us more finite detail on, in a number of areas, but where we're looking at the budget as passed, I put the figures next to each category. We are right on on some permits, we collected more revenues than we budgeted for. The flip side of that is you spend more money on engineering inspections and so forth down below, so you can see the total up there of 178, 274 is very close to what was budgeted and we still have three months to go, so we're sitting very nicely on revenues collected. The Class E road funds we have received four of six allotments, which is the 37, 796. So on the expenses, once again, we've estimated very high on the legal budget, very high on legal, engineering was over, we, we had to perform the full audit rather than the agreed upon procedure, which took out the financial from 3,500 to 55. But overall, expenditures are 60% of what was budgeted, so we're, I'd say, sitting in a pretty good place there. And we're obviously over on the snow removal, but we did not expand all of the funds budgeted in the road maintenance. So on the, the second page, the Polaris is not 100% accurate, but it gives, will give you a feel for what you'll be looking at as we prepare and approve next year's budget. And if there are line items that you don't feel we need to have in our budget, they can be eliminated if you want to add items so that you can keep better track of. We, I had to put in the snow removal, you know, most towns probably do that on their own, it's no, you don't care, or, or I T, we don't have in-house I T person. If you wanna know how much that is on a contractual basis, you know, we can put in or eliminate whatever you want. So there are no questions on the, the general fund, the water enterprise budget?
Did you move over, I'm sorry, I've got so much going on.
That's okay.
The, like the weed spray chemicals, I'm not seeing that on the, where did, where did that move to?
It's not on the budget as, as it is in there, so that's what I'm saying. If we wanna have line items as we prepare next year's budget, we will do that.
Okay.
There's probably a few more categories that you were talking about, think of the main that beyond the machine that we wanna clarify.
Well, and an I T's another one, I mean, we use Chris, do we wanna, do we wanna have that as a separate option, we can see how much we use.
You should, certainly for I P.
And I agree with that, and so as I was looking at how these fields are calculated in the Polaris software, I had to combine many line items to come up with what we call the office expenses, because it's broken out a lot more. So, but as we prepare the budget in a more detailed fashion, you can track better details, and I'm sure we will have line items that we wanna add to it. And, you know, Chip and I can do that so that as it's presented to you as the budget prepares, it will have those.
In May, to the council, correct?
Yes. So when we start our initial preparation budget. So, you know, you can, you can look over the Polaris one and make notes just as you have to make sure that we include everything you'd like to see on the budget.
Okay, thank you.
The water enterprise revenues were 77%, almost right on expenses, just 48%.
We made it through another winter.
And then the loans are taken care of, they're, the payments are being generated right now, so they've been paid for this, this way here. Stormhaven, I didn't give you the Polaris one, it's pretty simple, for what we've prepared, we're all at, right at budget, and we still have three months of revenues to receive. We will break out the sewer again, because it does keep track of water and sewer separately in the Polaris, so that can be there as well.
Lynn, one second, Kim, so is this gonna be a year we're gonna wanna pump or not pump as far as those tanks up there?
I think we'll be pumping.
Be pumping, and do you remember the cost, was it like a grand of the, or a tank or?
I don't, I don't even remember that, sorry.
What word?
There is an annual state test that has to be performed. That's around 400 to 450.
We'll talk, talk, and I'll find out just for budgetary reasons on, on state.
Does the county initiate that or does the state, personal company?
State, state comes in. It's under state regulation. We have an engineer that the old private water company used, and he seems to be reasonable and meets all the requirements with the state.
They, they notified me by email that said that that was due to be done, and so we got ahold of him and set up the time. And hopefully we'll have some grant monies to fill in down below there. But where we projected budgeted so far into the hole, I'd say we're pretty strong there. The last page on our packet shows money's on hand. Because we don't have separate bank accounts now, where it shows Zion's checking combined, the, when monies come in from sales tax, telecom tax, the municipal energy taxes and so forth that are automatically put into either the general funder, the general P T I F, then as she needs to pay bills out of the fund, she transfers monies out of there. But you can see on the top right, where it says water portion, there's 98,864 in the Daniel Municipal Water Fund, as well as the P T I F below of 98,167. The Stormhaven Fund has $29,000 in it, so both of those funds are liquid.
Can we more wisely invest that money or use that money? Besides having to sit and ejecting.
I think what you'd probably do is transfer it into a capital account and expand your water line.
So to use it?
Use it?
Yeah, there's gonna be, this, I think, is gonna be coming up, a capital project, that, that could come up and boom, you know, so there's.
So we had nearly spent down all of the Class E road P T I F account during the projects last year, and it's backed up to almost $47,000.
And we do have one, one or two more payments left on that?
We'll get two more.
Two more.
Which should be over 10,000.
Is that, is that easier sharing?
It sounds more confusing to me, does it work better for you this?
Okay. I bet you just, you can be used to many of them.
Maybe, yeah, I just, there's a lot of things I look for in the old one, I'm used to seeing it, I'm like, where is it? I can't see it.
It's much easier as far as what I do.
Okay. And so you probably put, like Lynn said, you put a new category together, the dollars are still in here, they're just not quite categorized out, that we will do, there is that problem.
Right, and where we would just have salaries, this itemizes and adds in payroll taxes and the benefits paid to employees, you have it all right there, don't have to go looking for things.
You have to pull the report, it's there.
Yeah, she's called, all the programs is called.
Anything else?
It works for you.
Always very well. That's it as far as the updates. I'm not saying all of them.